As our usual, hopefully, we will start with public comments this morning.
So.
Recording in progress.
Sorry.
So you didn't get all our names?
I did.
Okay.
Because I wrote them all down, but thank you.
Oops, oops. I just wanted to thank you Judy for always welcoming the public. I know that maybe inside you're not feeling so positive, but you on your face are always gracious to us. And I wanted to make sure that it was known what David said to me at the end of the last public session as he was handing me the letter. He said, "Hebe, you should find a hobby." So I found that rather unpleasant and also sexist because I don't think he would have said it to a guy. So I just didn't find that a welcoming of the public.
Thank you, okay. Anyone else from the public? We have a lot of attention here this morning, yes, boy.
No comment at this point, but I'm here to look and listen and see how the board responds to some questions that have been put to them over the past few weeks.
Okay, very good. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm just excited to be here. My wife Stacy and I have been here about two years or so. Figured might be time to show up and get involved, see what's going on. So, thank you, thank you for having us on the session.
You're welcome, we try. Sue?
You mentioned Hebe and Michael's comments, but not mine. Are you not going to address the bridge and the infrastructure funding?
I am, but I didn't see that as needing an immediate response detailed into the agenda.
It's just my experience that when you start a project, when you look at a project and commit to doing it, it takes on average about two years to get it accomplished.
Sometimes longer.
Yeah, that's true too. I can think of one especially.
Yes.
One little tiny note, Mrs. Quentin is my mother. I've never been Mrs. Quentin.
Are you Ms. Quentin?
I get it, because I'm not Mrs. Quentin either. That's my mother-in-law.
Exactly.
Okay.
We will try.
Would you like Ms.?
Fine.
Or just, okay.
Or just my name is fine, it's just.
Okay.
I personally dislike just last name use because in my childhood that was an insult. So I try and always add.
Both pieces is fine as well. I don't care, but Mrs. Quentin.
If that's the hardest issue we have to resolve, why we'll be in good shape. Welcome.
Thank you, good morning.
Do you get it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, very good. Anyone else? I haven't had any audience except for town meeting for two years. Okay. So, in response to Sue's question, which isn't delineated on the agenda, I actually spent an hour yesterday with a program geared towards helping municipalities file the paperwork to get grant funding. Well, that's the long story. The short story is I do not believe Lyme is eligible for those particular funds.
From New Hampshire?
We are a community that is considered to not be in need. And the bridge, as I see it, but we will probably be discussing it later, is not a project that would give, oh, where's my little piece of paper that I wrote this on, economic benefit to a needy class. Those are my words, not theirs. So, it didn't, doesn't look encouraging. And I know we looked at it one other time, I think about a year ago, because I remember we all were investigating it and we came to the conclusion that if you actually read through all the criteria, we don't qualify. Now, there may be other funds out there, that isn't to say there might not be, but that particular one, which was the, yeah, New Hampshire Live Free Grant Opportunity from the State Economic and Infrastructure Development Investment Program.
Is that the same as the federal infrastructure bill?
I do not know. This is the one that I was advised I needed to attend to look to see if we could get funds. And it was geared towards Grafton County, Sullivan and Cheshire Counties.
Thank you.
Okay, so I can keep investigating, but that's where we were with that. It's not an isolated area of distress, those are the words, just so you know. We may all be in distress.
It's just weakened infrastructure, that's all.
It is infrastructure, but it doesn't give a significant economic benefit.
It's a strange reaction for a bridge.
A public bridge.
A public bridge that carries people from a catchment area of at least 50 miles.
Well.
Well, it just means the town will have to pay for the repairs of the bridge.
Yeah, we can't apply if we don't qualify initially.
Bridge, it's not that it goes off the radar. And we have, we have a bridge repair fund.
We do. And Sue, if you have information on other programs that are out there.
We'll look for the federal stuff.
Send them along because we certainly would love to borrow or have free some money from somewhere else.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, there we are with that. Mr. Whitman has some questions. Wanted to know, this is a difficult one for me, Michael. You, you had some questions about our minutes and you wanted us to put information in the minutes that actually the vote, the, the motion and the vote were very clear what they were and that's what we do with our minutes. We, there, who's here, what the topics were, if there's a motion, who made the second, and what the vote was. But I think your question actually was, who's doing what? So when Mr. Khan made the motion to continue with the same appointments and roles as before, I'm Chair, Ben is Vice Chair, David serves on the Energy Committee and the Planning Board, Ben serves on the Historic Commission.
Conservation Commission.
And the Conservation Commission, and I'm on the Rec Commission and the Budget Committee, same as it has been. And hopefully, that information is also on the town website. We are aware that the website does not stay up to date and we are working on trying to get more proactive on keeping it up to date. The other question or comment you had was posting draft minutes. And we've been around about that before and sometimes the draft minutes do change. Well, they almost always change a little bit, but sometimes more significantly before we actually finalize them with a vote. And so we have them available here in the office, but they're not posted because we don't want people to have a look, see at it, think they've got it and there might be a change and then there's always a question of why that, if someone sees the change or doesn't see the change and might have some misinformation. So that's why we do it that way. And I appreciate, especially with us meeting every other week, it does make a bit of a delay if we don't have a meeting. So I do appreciate that.
Okay.
I do also think, the recording, Dina can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the recording of the meeting goes up fairly quickly, within three, four days.
Usually, yeah.
So even if the minutes aren't approved, there should be access to what happened in the meeting.
Okay. We just hope for it to come as promptly as possible because a four, six week wait seems overly long.
Well, you said, you said three weeks was, and that should be the longest that it has been, but it's.
Per minutes, yeah. Well, I mean, there are, we do our best in the office and there are times where we might forget to post the final minutes immediately after the meeting and sometimes we need a reminder. So we're not perfect, so I'm sure it's happened.
Okay, so, and that leads me to Hebe's list of questions. And I wanted to make sure I had this right. And we spent some time thinking about responses for you. We do receive email designated for the Select Board in the town offices. The Administrator and the Select Board read the emails. The emails are forwarded, they come in here, they're forwarded to the three of us. The town website is updated by several staff individuals, not the sole responsibility of anyone. And we do know staff has a lot of duties and they can't always get to that right away. We apologize, I have found it frustrating, I know it's always frustrating when you look up something and it's several years old and you know it's not right.
The question, where to send, where to send notes if you notice something?
I would.
To Jordan.
Jordan.
Her email is assessing.
Yep.
I also want you to know that at the end of the meeting, I'm going to request that this be attached to the minutes and if you ask Dina, she will send it to you electronically.
So you, you discuss this in non-public?
We had a brief discussion in non-public. I wrote a draft. Dina sent it to the two selectmen who made edits to it and we did not talk between us and this is the merger of the different edits.
Good.
The board, the town clerk and the town moderator all sat in this room in a public session and discussed the post-up warrant for town meeting. We discussed which board member would speak to which article and it was prior to town meeting. I don't know if it was a week or two, no votes were taken, but it was consensus of the board that we agreed who would speak to what. Kevin Peterson was instrumental in doing that. He likes to know where to look and where to focus. As you know and most of the others who've been here intermittently, many questions addressed during board meetings are discussed and a decision is reached by consensus. If money is involved or if it's a contract or something similar to that, we do make a motion, have a second and have a formal vote, but a lot of things are not formally voted. With regard to Articles Two, Three and Four, the board supported and continues to support Mr. Khan's presentation to you that was done at town meeting. We believe he spoke with candor about the challenges that motivated the board to ask the town to approve the appointment of these selected positions. I know you disagree. The board discussed Article 14 on several occasions and had begun working on reviewing existing data as we stated, to have a proposal that is supported by documentation at next year's town meeting. The board also respectfully disagrees with your reading of state law concerning residency requirements. However, that conversation is now moot, given the vote to retain the tax collector as an elected position. Should the proposal come forward again, we will include a list of proposed minimum requirements for the position that will address residency. Great River Hydro initiated a series of lawsuits to obtain refunds of taxes paid to the town of Lyme and various other municipalities. Unfortunately, from the town's perspective, Great River Hydro has so far generally prevailed in court on these disputes. After considerable thought and discussion, including multiple discussions with the town's attorneys, attorneys, several different firms, the Select Board believed it was the town's best interest to avoid additional losses and attorney's fees by entering into a settlement agreement with Great River Hydro. These legal discussions were necessarily conducted by the board in non-public session. Going forward, Great River Hydro will continue to pay property tax to the town of Lyme. Dina? Or attachment to minutes?
Okay, great, thanks.
So that, from our perspective, answers your question.
Is that agreement public?
I'm not sure, Great River Hydro's agreement?
The, the final agreement is public, yes, the settlement, yep.
Do we know where it is to see it?
Well, I could print you a copy. But, I mean, I don't, you know, it's filed, so I don't keep it just in the office, but yes.
Yes, it's just the result, so it would be nice to say this was the, this was the final decision and this is, has been filed where it's filed or whatever, the agreement, because it was the final outcome of your discussions.
It was a final settlement agreement that the attorney of, you know, wrote.
Right.
And Great River signed and the board signed.
Right, right, so it just seems like it should be something that the public could, would be aware of if they read the minutes or there was some sort of.
You would have, it was noted in the minutes.
We made note of it in the minutes, but we did not include a copy of it.
Sorry, I went back and couldn't find anything.
It was quite some time ago. Because this is the second year.
Well, and it may have been non-public minutes because it was a legal court settlement.
Well, all the discussions were, but the final outcome would have been noted in public somewhere. I, I can look and see if I can get my hands on it.
Thank you.
Okay, now, I'm going to jump around a little bit and we have gotten a note from our new tax collector, welcome very much. And she would like to change the tax collector's hours to Tuesdays from four to six. And she said that when she was interim tax collector, late afternoon, early evening hours seemed to work very well. How do we feel about that?
I don't have any problem.
You're good to go.
All right.
Tuesday, four to six.
Thank you.
And I also understand that you have spoken with Deb Killam and would like her to be your deputy tax collector.
Yes.
She has agreed to that.
Uh, yes.
Ben can't speak to this issue. Mr. Khan, how do you feel about that?
It's fine.
We approve that, so we will get an oath of office for her and we will approve her as your deputy.
I'm, I'm sure you do this anyways, but maybe kind of keep track of how the change in office hours works for people if you get complaints or if you.
Sure.
If there's pushback from, from the public, we should.
Yes, I planned on sending out a listener email, just notifying them, I'll, you know, put something in the lobby and then, but I will definitely keep track of, of people, yeah, sure.
And so before we leave this finally, I don't think we need to do anything official for the hours, but I think we should have a motion and a second for appointing Deb Killam as deputy tax collector.
Sure.
Thank you, David, and I will second it. And all those in favor say aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye, so it's.
I abstain.
Thank you, Ben. I didn't mean to ignore you.
I'm curious how you would have voted.
It's entirely her business.
All right.
Believe me, I don't have a lot to say.
Okay, do you have anything else for us?
Me?
Yeah.
Sorry, um, I don't think so. If anybody has anything for me, because I am new.
Do you have any? I don't have any questions for you.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much.
And will you just make sure you go by Jordan to sign those things?
Yep, I already did, but I do have one question, so after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have a New Hampshire, the beautiful litter-free blue bag program and it's essentially will be handed to the Conservation Commission and it's for the Green Up Day.
Yep.
So just letting you know that that's come in again and I have no idea what date it's going to be.
I don't remember what Green Up Day is, might be on the next page, but either way.
First Saturday in May.
I was just going to say. I think it's the first week in May sometime, yeah.
Reality is you could do one every week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Certainly.
It's amazing amount of stuff that goes out on that road side.
Okay, I'm not seeing it quickly, but nonetheless, I have something left for you.
Thank you.
I was hoping people go to the Conservation Commission. One other follow-up thing that I forgot. We are working on a response to the Lyme Heritage Commission. I did not get to it this past week, so it is counted until the next meeting, but has to do with suggestions for the Lyme Common and the East Bedford Lime Bridge. So just so folks know, we did not forget that. Let's move to.
I did, also not on the agenda, but I did a little bit of research about the Meals and Rooms Tax and the proposed abatement. So as far as I can see, that hasn't really gone anywhere and all of the, the concern was generated out of a couple of comments that Governor Sununu made. I looked on the New Hampshire Municipal Organization to see if they had responded in any formal way. They haven't yet.
No, not yet.
I wonder if trying to, I'm happy to try to draft a letter that expresses our.
Concern?
Concern about it, but, but it, I wonder if it isn't a little premature given that we don't really have anything called creed yet and.
Could be, yeah. I know that the Legislative Committee for the New Hampshire Municipal is meeting, they were supposed to meet Friday, but it got canceled, so they'll be meeting later on and I'm sure this will be one, something they're going to talk about.
Okay, so before drafting something, maybe we can.
Let's wait for that to spring up.
See what they say or.
Yeah, that, thank you for looking into that, because that is a, a big chunk of change that we would be missing if they decided to do that. I think you folks heard that, or may have heard, that they were proposing to not collect the Rooms and Meals Tax at least over the summer, if not further, so there'd be no disparted. Maybe something we agree about. So, we're hoping that they don't do that and I don't have that piece of paper in front of me, but Dina did look up the amount of money and it's significant to us.
Hundred and twenty-seven thousand last year.
Well, last year was typically high for me.
Last year was, I'd say an average is probably ninety.
Do you know why it was so high last year?
Well, I, I can't say for sure, but having a family in the business, it's because people were doing a ton of takeout, pick-up, take-out, drop-off.
I would have thought that the rooms, room rentals would be off.
Probably.
But maybe.
Well, they were, they were initially, but as soon as things lightened up a little bit.
Over the summer, probably?
They, they started filling up.
Well, and especially in this area, you know, people were really, really trying very hard to support their local restaurant, cafe, whatever, so they wouldn't go under, so.
I, I, just personally, I don't think the Room and Meals Tax is going to prevent anybody from coming to New Hampshire and spending money.
I don't think so, you know.
No.
We need to vote to approve the recommendation for Forest Fire Warden. And we need a motion and a second and the fire department, do you have that right in front of you? They have forwarded to us Ernst Klum's name.
Right.
Wait, who forwarded that to us, Dan?
Fire Department.
Well, no, Don Elder, the, the past warden, supported it. And then I spoke with Aaron.
Aaron, Aaron was.
The chief, and he was great about it and I spoke to Ernst to make sure that he really wanted it. And yes, and yes, and yes, all around.
I'll, I'll move it.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ben, thank you, David. All those in favor of Ernst Klum for Forest Fire Warden, say aye.
Ben, aye.
Ben, aye.
Judy, aye. Thank you, Dina.
Now, the other thing that Aaron talked me as well, brought up was the 911. Person who charged that, I guess, Don has been doing it and I'm not clear whether he wants to continue doing it.
Right, that's being checked into, discussed.
Well, you, you called on a little.
Dan, I don't understand what that.
It's getting the 911 addresses as new houses go in and those have, need to be kept up to date so that when a 911 called, those in, they know where to respond to. Currently, our ad, most of our addresses are minus one seventy-two graphic term by that one point seven two miles from the beginning of graphic term by.
I see.
So it gives them a clear.
So I'm going to see responders and know where to go.
Every time you put a new house in, mess up the map, you gotta make sure of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's just have a really good time and let's look at our March 24th minutes.
Thank you. Don will be happy.
What do we wish to do with these? Well, had them sent to you, right? No, not, not them all, you all, David and Ben.
I had no changes, they were calling.
Okay.
Oh, oh.
Thank you, Ben.
I'll second.
Thank you, David, all those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye, those are approved. Okay. We have an abatement merger that was not processed. Dina, was there anyone to?
Yes, ma'am, we have a property that, um, it was merged, a small piece, 3.5 acre lot that was merged in with a much larger lot and it was not processed correctly. So the person was charged for the original 3.5 acres. So we have to.
Ask the tax abatement?
For an abatement, correct. So their tax bill, it, what the merger does is it puts it into.
Current use.
Current view, correct. So it's a huge difference, so they paid $5,338.73 and the abated amount of tax is $5,191.89. So it changes the property value, the land value significantly.
Can you read those two numbers again?
Sure. $5,338.78 is the amount the person paid and $5,191.89 is the amount being abated.
Okay.
That delta is the difference between that property normally and the property in current use?
Correct.
What was the reason that the merger wasn't processed, can we know?
Fell through the cracks. It was just a data entry mistake. Um, so the abatement amount, I mean, yeah, the, the amount the person is going to get back is.
Five thousandths.
Yes, and we have to, plus interest, six percent interest.
And that, the interest rate is, is determined by statute?
Yes.
Okay. What do we wish to do with this, thank you.
I'll move it. I'll second.
Thank you, those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. Okay, that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And. Sorry. I'm practicing tossing skills.
Keep at it.
Thanks. I mean, I'm not going to make the league team. All right. Now, there's another thing that's not on here, while we should have done this a little bit earlier. We have oath of officers that we need to sign for the Recreation Commission. We probably should approve those. And we also have a road agent appointment that we need to make. So let's start with the road agent. I would propose that we have a road agent that we are very confident in right now and we should appoint him for an additional year. Scott Bailey.
He's, I, Dina, do you know, I, I believe he, he wishes to continue his road agent role?
Yes, he does, yes.
I'll move it, reappoint Scott Bailey as road agent.
Second.
Thank you, Ben, thank you, David, all those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye, okay. At least that's a little bit of good news for him. The, what season has taken its toll. It's been a really tough year. Okay. And we have the Recreation Commission.
All of them right there.
Okay, so this is Scott and the Recreation. Oh, is that what I wanted to say, yes.
Yep.
This is Dina and Chris Pratt for the Recreation Commission. So I guess we should formally move to approve Dina and Chris Pratt as members of the Recreation Commission.
Start, start, start. Like it's like song.
Levity.
Ah! It's a good song. You know, I got, I got it made. Everyone shouldn't be. Sorry about that.
Sorry, pockets.
Oh, yeah, don't let me get me started.
So I'm gonna move Dina and Chris Pratt as members of the Recreation Commission, I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ben, uh, David, and all those in favor, say aye.
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. So these are approved. Okay.
You can sign Debbie's too, if you, so she's, since she already voted her.
Yeah. And. One more. Sorry about this. There you go, my friend, and this one is Deb Killen that we just voted.
Yes, ma'am.
Next up. Equalization data certificate, I have not seen that yet, so I'm guessing you have it.
Well, I just, I just held it up, I do have it, um, but I would like to wait because there is some data that should be with this and a letter from the DRA.
Okay.
With my computer issues, I couldn't get on this morning and get it off.
Okay.
I'm so sorry.
All right, so, how about the permit by Vegetation Control Service Inc. for the New Hampshire Electric Cooperative? What is it they are looking to do, Dina?
Oh, my goodness, they're gonna be spraying in, uh, let's see, various areas in town, in town. Herbicides, um, and it looks like it is, well, they're doing it in many different towns, but they're coming up and down Route ten. Let's see, that's Orford, that's Wentworth, so it's mostly on Route ten, but there's some up on Orfordville Road. And I don't, I think they're doing High Bridge, some of the very back roads.
Okay, so they're spraying, though, they're not using goats or sheep or anything like that?
That's my understanding. Oh, no, 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 no animals, I don't really.
Are they gonna get permission from property owners when they go on and do that?
Well, they notify property owners, but as far as getting permission, I don't think so, because they're in the right of way.
Gosh, I would be upset if someone came on my property and sprayed herbicide without checking with me.
They're spraying on the side of the road.
Yeah, that still belongs to somebody.
It's not, well, I might get, you, you would get a notice, so you could call a number and.
If you were doing organic farming or something.
You could do your, do your around.
Yeah, that would mess you up.
Well, if you get a notice, though, I would hope that you would call and let them know.
So do we need to do anything?
No, it's really just a notification.
It's, it's just a notice to us as well.
Correct, it's just a polite notice.
Okay. Let us get all tweaked about it, but at least we know when some, you know, that, that would be, does it say when they're gonna be doing the spraying?
And there's, well, listen, and I'll put this, we can put this part on the web, because it talks about um, who to contact, and if they have questions, and all this other stuff.
Yeah.
We should definitely put that, Dina, so people.
So we'll put it right on the website, and we'll hang a notice out where we do notices and.
Yep. That'd be great.
That's what we do with the milfoil, so people can call the company themselves and ask their questions, not us, so. And there's maps, so the ones that pertain to mine, I'll have Jordan scan them and put those.
That'd be great, and if she could, if she could get that up in the next day or two, that'd be, that'd be really super, um, so folks will know.
Yeah.
Cause a lot of times you get mail and.
Yep.
Comes from one of your non-favorite people, sometimes you put it on the bottom of the pile, don't pay attention.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Happy to do that.
So this is next meeting. This is post. Okay. What else do we have that we weren't aware of?
Oh, let's see, I didn't take very long.
I know what, I know what people might want to know. We have some totals on Monday of mud season, so far, as of Monday. Dina worked this up for us, grand total, as of Monday, was seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and five cents. Um, this included work hours for the highway crew, overtime, and additional workers, trucking, and additional grader operator and material. So we have a breakdown of that cost. Um, needless to say, they've exceeded what was budgeted.
But it wasn't extraordinary, what was budgeted?
Budgeted was sixty thousand.
So it wasn't an extraordinary order, considering the mud season, which was extraordinary.
Well, it was about twenty thousand over, but yeah, yeah.
How was snow season, was that down? You didn't have any snow?
I don't have any numbers for snow season.
Yeah, I didn't even look at those, I was just so concentrated on the mud season, but I'll look and see, but we're not, you know, certainly not over budget for winter, so.
Didn't seem like it was as bad a snow season as usual.
Yeah, it was a lot more s- salping and sandy.
Very slippery.
And icy, yeah.
So, um. We have three non-public sessions coming up, but not until ten-thirty, we might be able to start that one a little bit earlier.
Could we uh, just get some feedback, some of these guys showed up for specific questions.
Yeah. That, that would be great.
Come on, off.
Open it back up to the public?
I, I'll defer to he, he.
No, no.
What I would like to know, in taking in light of your remarks earlier today, is what kind of thinking went into your decisions to, to propose Articles two, three, and four? And given the meeting, which was pretty fulsome, uh, you mentioned that you had not changed your minds or thought differently about it, and I'd be interested to know what your reasoning was for proposing those, those were big organizational changes, there must've been deliberations that went into it, some research and data collection, I'm assuming, and yet after the town meeting, it seems to me there were some cogent arguments made, and I'm curious as to why those seem to have made no difference to your thinking.
Well, were you out at, were you at town meeting?
I indeed was.
So I, I thought that we had a fairly detailed explanation of what our thinking was?
I don't recall a detailed explanation, except the sort of stark remark that David made, saying that the appointed system, uh, the electoral system was broken, that seems like a pretty stark organizational claim to make. And I'm wondering if you could elaborate on what was broken about it, and it seems that you appear to be ready to re-entertain it.
Well, I don't think that that is a fair assessment, I simply said that we still have that same opinion, we haven't looked forward to next year at all.
Uh, that's, that wasn't my question, I would like to know what your thinking is now, that leads you to say that whatever, the discussion was ninety percent from the audience at the town meeting, and I'm wondering why those had seemingly no impact on your thinking, according to what you've said here.
Unfortunately, we're privy to information that would fit into non-public reputation and things like that, that we cannot discuss in public. And so we're aware of, of the fact that there can be uh people that are elected that have bailings uh, that we can't address very well if they're elected officials, and you'll never know about it, we'll know about it, but the public will never know about it. So it puts us in a, in a quandary, if we, they were appointed position, we could act on putting a remedy to the problem. So that's, that's the quandary that we can. Well, I can't be specific, unfortunately.
I understand that, but at least you're saying that there is no public access to the motivations and reasons why.
Well, that, that.
This is what I said at the, at the public meeting, look, these are positions that deal with, um, that have very substantial responsibility, that, that deal with large amounts of money, and if they're appointed positions, you can publish requirements for someone to, to apply for that position. You, the, the select board can look at resumes, they can go back, they can, uh, they can go back and interview references, they can do some research. None of those things are possible in a, in an elected setting. You know, if you have a statewide elected office, presumably the press and other interested organizations are going out and doing research on candidates and publishing information, for a little thing like the overseer of welfare, just to pick one of the three as an example, no one's gonna do that. It's very, it's very difficult for, in, in our view, I think, uh, it's very difficult for the town to make an informed decision about somebody's qualifications. Um, and sometimes I think there's a, there's a risk that what it be, what it boils down to in an elected situation is just a, a name recognition question or a, or a popularity contest. Uh, likewise, if after someone is in the position, it, uh, it turns out that they have technical deficiencies or, or, um, you know, they're just not able to do one or more aspects of the job, when the position is elected, there's, there's no recourse. What ends up happening is the people who work in the town end up having to just cover for the elected office, officer in addition to doing their own job that they're paid for, um, the select board hears about that, the public would never typically be aware of that at all. But, um, if the position is appointed, well, then the select board has some ability to require that the person obtain appropriate training, or in, in a, in a worst-case scenario, they have the ability to say, look, this isn't working out, we're gonna, we're gonna let you go and appoint somebody else, when the position is elected, those things aren't possible, so. And, and that is what I, I thought I said, uh, or I tried to say at the, uh, at the town meeting. I, I guess my, uh, my presentation was not well-received, or at least wasn't well-received by some people, but that, that was the thinking beyond the select board's position, um.
Fair enough, this is a little more explicit than what was said, and, uh, I was more curious as to, I mean, we elect the select board. So any of the remarks that you're making, I would think could apply in substantial measure to the select board itself, which is elected.
I would respectfully disagree with that, the, the, the select board is not hi, is not elected for its technical expertise with respect to anything. What you're voting for when you vote for a select board member is some, is someone of goodwill and hopefully good judgment. That's not the case with respect to a position like the treasurer or the tax collector, where there is a very significant technical and legal knowledge requirement in order to effectively do the job. Uh, those are different things, you, 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 you just can't do those jobs, those three positions in particular, without a fairly substantial knowledge and, and, and skill base. With respect to the select board, and that, we don't, we, none of us have specific governmental expertise that's necessary to do this job. Um, you know, when we need technical expertise, we reach out to people like our town council or, or someone with appropriate expertise. So it, it's kinda different, I think.
Sean.
Hi, Sean McPhee, I haven't spoke yet, uh, just to give you sort of a, sort of enlighten you about what I think the board is trying to say. So for many years, police and specifically police chiefs were elected officials. The town can't get rid of an elected official if they are bad, if they're not doing their job. And over the years, the state of New Hampshire suffered some pretty huge lawsuits in towns and cities where elected police officials didn't do their job and acted inappropriately. To this day, there are not very many, I think less than five towns, that actually elect their police chief. And it's because they can't, you know, you can't know, the public can't know what the board can investigate and look into when they hire an employee. So I think if you look at it in that, that perspective, you might see where, you know, like David tried to explain, you got people working with lots of money, you got people working with all kinds of, uh, town, uh, stuff that some, you know, the public doesn't know, and can't know, in, in certain.
I'd just like to add about the select board, because there's three of us, it takes two to make a decision, uh, and every year you got a chance to get rid of any one of us. So the public is the ultimate judge of whether we're doing a good job or not. And we get that, routinely, you get that opportunity to remove at least one of us from the select board.
There's substantial training available through the state and.
Yes, we, when we become a selectman, we have to go down and get.
Also available for the two, three, and four appointed, elected positions.
And they get training as well.
My understanding is that they have, they do that.
Yep.
And I guess you can make vague statements about not performing their duties, but perhaps something more concrete about, you know, this should've been done on this date, and if this was not followed up.
We really can't do that, we really can't.
We can't do that, we'd be, that would be slandering somebody or would be disparaging their reputation, we don't wanna, you know, look, all the people who do this are doing it out of goodwill, and then none of them, there is no, to the extent it was unclear, there is no sentiment on the, on this select board that any of the people who do any of these jobs in, in, in living memory have, have acted with malevolence, have, or have deliberately tried to do anything bad. We wouldn't wanna, we don't wanna say anything bad about any of those people, that's, it's, it's a, it's an incredible thing to step forward and try to help your town by doing those, those, those jobs. That said, it is not necessarily always the case that the goodwill and good intentions translate to good results. Uh, I'm sure all of us have known people who wanted to do something in their lives and just for whatever reason didn't have the talents necessary to do that thing well. Unfortunately, if, if that situation arises in one of those three positions, it puts the town in a very difficult position. It puts the town in a position where there is potentially very significant liability, uh, and even fall, even, even if, even if the worst sort of, you know, disaster that you can imagine under those settings doesn't, doesn't arise, it, 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 it puts a lot of pressure on the people who work for the town, who end up having to cover, who end up having to, you know, backfill for the, for the things that aren't being done correctly.
Well, well, as good managers, it's your role to step in and support those people.
Of course, and we try to do that, but it isn't support. Not all problems can be fixed, or, or can be, you can't always, you, you know, sometimes you get somebody who just can't do something or isn't, who isn't suited for a particular job, or who, you know, doesn't have the headbone or whatever, they, they don't, or they have other things going on in their lives. You know, that, that's not to disparage those people, it's, uh, you know, when I was a young attorney, there was a, a, a person who, who we hired at our law firm, who really wanted to be a tax lawyer, and that had been her, her dream for, forever, and she just didn't have the, the ability to do it. And, you know, it's not, you're not trying to be mean, you're not trying to, uh, but you have to, it's not a. It's not a, sometimes it's not a solvable problem.
So historically, have you come anywhere close to the scenarios you're describing with regard to appointed officers?
Mr. Els.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sue would like to make a comment.
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate something that Hibi said. As a select board member, if you recognize a deficiency in an employee or an elected official, you have a, you know, it's the select board's responsibility to work with that person to try and improve things.
And we do. Sometimes that doesn't work.
Well, you know, the individual stood up and said, no one, no one select board member had ever spoken to him.
Well, that probably was not accurate.
I don't know, we don't want to talk about any specific person or any specific setting.
Also not geared towards any one individual. This was our thought for the betterment of those three positions going forward for the town. So to focus on one individual is a mistake.
And not reflecting whose select person at any given time, or thinking about the positions in general.
I'm sorry.
Right, I understand that. I've been there, done that, we recognize a deficiency, we work with the individuals.
Correct.
And when that works, that's great. But it's just unfortunately not always the case that you can solve problems that way. Sometimes you can't.
Mr. Brown.
Hi, yeah. Hoy, you asked a really probing question. Do you think it's answered by this? I mean, the select board has stated their thinking and the town.
It's clearer to me now, and if there were historical experience that informs the current thinking, without getting into any individuals' biographies or careers here, that would have been helpful if, in a general sense, you could say the history of the town with regard to appointed offices of these types. We have had, from time to time, significant problems and troubles that we think that the appointed system would address. I don't recall anything that clear or specific or reflecting what I'm concerned about is I guess also the openness and invitation to public deliberation of these matters.
We can't do that, that's what we've been trying to.
The warrant articles can surely be discussed in public.
Oh, the warrant articles.
What I'm saying is the decision to forward those articles, it seems to me, would have reflected a lot of public. And I was unaware that you had meetings in which those were mooted. I just missed it.
Fair enough.
I thought I expressed this at town meeting, but apparently I, or either I wasn't clear enough or.
Well, being fuller regarding the historic experience would have helped to somewhat inform the cover statements that were quite categorical and striking.
And look, we totally get it. It's not a popular thing to come to a town and say, hey, we'd like you to not have, we'd like to take this decision away from you. And, you know, we get that, that's not something people. All of that said, having been on both sides of this now, both as just a resident of Lyme and a select board member, as, if I were an attorney practicing and my client was a town of Lyme, I would recommend them to change to an appointed position. Mostly because of your ability to better vet the candidates in advance of hiring them. But also because you have the ability to, you have more flexibility to fix problems if they occur after hiring. But I understand it's unpopular. It was unpopular last year when we proposed this with respect to the, with respect to the overseer of public welfare and the tax collector, it was unpopular this year, obviously, it failed to pass.
Unfortunately, we're not able to get into a listserv discussion. And it was already decided on listserv before town meeting started. I could read the tea leaves, it wasn't very difficult.
I figured it was going to not pass when we first proposed it. But, look, my job's not to be popular with, you know, or to just do things that everybody's going to, at least my vision of what this job entails is you're trying to make decisions that are in the best interest of the town. Look, I don't, there's a zillion things I could be doing now other than this. You don't get any money for doing this job. This is, the only reason you do it is to try to do right by the town. You propose it even if you think it's going to fail, if you think it's the right thing.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I just had one question. Because it sounds like, I think, part of the issue, you know, between elected and appointed, I think is this, the idea of responsibility to the public, right? A responsiveness and this idea of how does the, what control does the public have over how this person performs? I guess my question is, is there a significant difference for the public's ability to know how well any one particular person is doing in a position when it's an appointed position versus an elected position? So they wouldn't necessarily know more or less about that person's performance depending on how it's done.
The public might not.
They might or might not. I guess the question then becomes, let's just, let's just say it's the same amount of knowledge that you have. If someone seems to be doing their job well or poor, more poorly, is there a significant difference in the abilities, the public's ability to let the select board know in the case of an appointed official versus having to wait for an election? Like if there were a problem with a particular official, does the public have the same amount of ability to let that issue be known or have it addressed? You know, like, does that make sense?
Well, the reality, before the public would be aware of the kind of things that we're aware of. It would have to make the Valley news, it'd have to be a real big scandal.
Right.
And then the public would.
Either whether it was an elected official or an appointed official. So in other words, right, okay.
Or you have to have an individual.
Right, okay. So it doesn't, yeah, okay.
Can I ask why my reading of the RSAs about residential status differs from yours?
Yeah, I cannot find the RSA specifically, you know, that states that residency requirement, it does not apply. You sent, as far as I could see, a comment by someone in maybe a law lecture class talking about residency for other positions, and it was an aside. I could not find a specific RSA that addressed residency or non-residency requirement for the tax collector. And that's the reason why.
I'll see if I can do a better job specifically finding the statute. It's sometimes challenging to find those suckers online.
It is, and I've spent way too much time right now looking for it because it doesn't matter right now. So, and in the future, we could address that.
I mean, if you're going to bring this up again.
Well, yeah, we will.
What point in bringing it up again if it's going to fail again?
Or if we do, we will have the other piece of it in place, which would address some of those concerns. I would like to change the subject wholly right now, since we do have so many people there and we have a few extra minutes. Town meeting day. Traditionally, Lyme is one of the last few towns that does the voting and the business meeting on the same day. It has been suggested that we might get more younger family people or working people who can't take a day off from work if we held town meeting on Saturday. I've been here long enough to remember when we did that. We also once did Saturday morning town meeting and Saturday afternoon school district meeting. You folks have all been here for quite a while, most of you. And I would love to hear what you would think about a Saturday town meeting or a different way to get more of the population out for town.
I, you know, what was really brilliant was in the COVID times, the tent on the common really got everybody out there and that.
That was great.
Why not think about doing that? Because it was both town meeting and school board, school meeting.
Yeah, but the state does make the time of our town meeting, so.
We have to do it in March.
A little chilly out in Breen.
We could get heaters. I thought actually the, under the tent was the best town meeting we've had for a long time, just the feel of it.
Everybody liked that.
It was just fun to be on the.
But there is another challenge with that, which by May, which is when we probably could do it, comfort wise, we're halfway through the year of the budget and we haven't yet passed the budget. So that's kind of a sticky bit here.
Well, I don't think we'd be allowed to do it.
I'm not sure.
We were allowed to do it because of an emergency because of COVID.
Well, that, yeah, but I don't know. But let's.
Try and make it more festive.
What do we think? Yeah.
I think having it morning for the town and then afternoon for the school, even if it were in the gym in March, that.
With a lunch in between.
A lunch in between and, you know, happy things.
On a weekday or a weekend?
Saturday.
Yeah, a weekend.
It'd be amazing if you could get everybody from the morning meeting to stay for the afternoon meeting.
Well, I mean, you're going to get more, certainly you're going to get more because if, wait a minute, there's lunch? And then I have to hang around for the, okay. So, I mean, I would encourage both on one day, Saturday sounds great.
I'm just asking because nobody has authorized me to set up anything different.
I'm not, yeah, right.
But I've heard from people who said, gee, you know, we really have lost that sense of community and it would be nice to try and do something different.
Yep.
But Sue.
I like the traditional day and I think in every year that I'm aware of, we've had 300 plus people come to the meetings before COVID. And the participants, everybody knows when it is, when it's going to happen. And the people who are interested and committed make an effort to be there and can take a day off from work or whatever to get there. And I think the tradition is worth something and it has worked well for the town. Will you get more people? It's been tried in the past and the answer was no. Changing times, changing rhythm, everybody gets used to the way it is, it's been this way for years. In some respects, I like the tradition.
On Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah. I just, I thought of something when you were going over that. And the other part I love about town meeting being on Tuesdays is normally the school is still in session. So the kids come in.
Yeah.
You know, the classroom teachers bring the kids in to learn about it and to watch. And I just think that's really great that that can happen.
Did they bring whole classes?
No, well, during COVID, they haven't done it. But prior to that, Mr. Dano always brought his class in, always, every year.
Please.
As a child in Lyme School, we've attended every town meeting.
One, two of us.
Ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Third time charm. Right, okay. Just, just a little bit of number crunching here. What, from the May town meeting, do we have numbers of attendees versus this past March?
This past March was down, it was like 140 or 150 people. I don't remember how many were at the May town meeting.
Just a curiosity thing. I mean, that would, that would at least tell me one little spigot.
It's in the minutes, I know that, the town meeting minutes.
Oh, great.
Because I can't remember what the May one was either, yeah.
Yeah.
I, remembering back to when it was tried on Saturday and why it was determined that it didn't work, it would be at least worth revisiting those reasons. Before we tried it.
Like, not everyone can take a day off of work or.
Oh, I understand that.
Childcare stuff and.
Right, I used to work and not be able to attend.
Me too.
So, I know, I just was, because I recall that we tried it and it failed, that we should at least assess those concerns.
Did we simulcast over Zoom, the town meeting, or was it just in person?
No, it was just, yeah.
We should ask town council if there's a problem with, you know, maybe, I don't know, I'm making more work or making it difficult, but maybe one thing we could do would be to add a Zoom link so that people who can't necessarily take the day off, but might be able to take an hour and listen in.
Yeah, well, I, I think if we're going to, well, they can't vote, right, but they could at least listen. If you're going to continue Zoom, I would, I would suggest at least doing that. If nothing else, you're recording it so that if somebody had to miss it, they could go on the website and they could watch what happened, so.
Can I add, your comment about the young families, which I think is really pertinent. It becomes a catch 22, right? Because on one hand, the kids are in school during weekday. So then, you know, if the parents can take the day off, which is always a big gift, depending on, especially some of the really young parents, their job, they just may not have that ability to do that. However, having gone through the person, personal experience of trying to get childcare, if you don't have kids old enough to actually do the babysitting, Saturday becomes a real issue because you don't feel like you can drive your three-year-old or your five-year-old there. It's definitely something to be aware of, but sometimes that, with the young families, it's a little bit of.
Well, in the past, though, they have, the PTO and the school groups have organized babysitting.
Oh, see, I was wondering if that was possibly, that's, that's.
Yeah, down in the computer, in the IT room, and they have.
Well, that's also a very nice community thing in the sense that, you know, you have this. I mean, I think the thing that strikes me is as much of the community coming together and having face to face, however it's possible to do that, I think that helps create a little more goodwill and mitigate some of the national conflict that comes up with people. Like, and the idea of like having food, you know? As soon as you feed people and they have to kind of spend a little time together, sometimes that can help bring the blood pressure down a little, at least it does for me.
Well, that's been a long tradition until COVID.
COVID has sort of.
Has put the kibosh, yeah.
Yeah, but I was going to say, the other thing, I think, when a survey was done years ago, one of the feedback from some of the parents was they didn't want to give up a Saturday because they have that day to go skiing or hiking or doing whatever with their kids.
I have a kid, I feel like they give up every Saturday.
You know, it's just, yeah, everyone's different, you know?
I wanted to amend my point in light of what Sue said. Saturday is kind of interesting. We just thought of lots of reasons Saturday is not interesting. I think it's useful to have the town meeting and the school meeting on the same day because I have been to town meeting a bunch of times. I have not yet made it to a school board, to a school meeting.
You should ask, you should go and tell the school board that because they're the ones that would have to change.
Yes, but I mean.
From Thursday night to a Saturday afternoon.
Yes, and so, so I've got to go to a school board meeting at least once, okay.
Or they're not constrained.
Or they have to communicate to Yolanda.
Okay.
Date wise, they are, they can't go way out unless it's an emergency also. Yes, they run under the same, same RSAs, but it's not a specific day chosen for that.
They could do it on a Tuesday after the town meeting.
That's right.
Rather than a Saturday.
Well, yeah, they, first, no, they do it Thursday night at six o'clock.
Right, right.
Well, I appreciate everyone.
Can I make one more suggestion? That the more you guys can share publicly, when you post something to the web, if you do a little list serve link to whatever it is, get people coming back to your website, knowing what you guys are doing, all the public stuff, you know, the stuff about spraying, all of that is, people will then feel engaged and understand, we know what the select board is doing as opposed to, you know, the silence, the radio silence that a lot of us feel about what you guys are actually up to.
I think we need a communications, a public communications officer. Michael, you're volunteering.
You got the job. Was it appointed or elected?
Well, this, you know, having, having coupled here again and being able to have these discussions is a lot better.
Use every communication possibility you have.
Michael, did you actually want to say something?
I do want to say something. And that is, I think there is a huge feeling of the loss of community in recent years for various reasons. COVID, obviously, social media is another one. And that people, I think we might find that people, particularly in our community, which we all feel is very special, would love, would be interested to have a Saturday, be it a town meeting day, an event that does have food and both meetings might, on the same day, be a draw. And that maybe people would come up with other ideas about how to make this enticing and a draw to get more people to town meeting. And just a community meeting with more talking. Food is a wonderful lubricant for. Food is a wonderful lubricant for, for meeting and talking.
I know a juggler is calling that.
Sometimes the juggler man, I'll have to talk to his manager.
And you get Skip Katie too.
Yeah.
And let's not lose Little Town Meeting. That was very sad.
That was terrible.
Yep.
That was too bad. We all were disappointed.
Yes, we want Little Town Meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I think that serves, Little Town Meeting serves the opportunity for people at least to come and hear about things on evening when they're not working, even if they can't make a time.
No, Little Town Meeting had a, had a very good purpose in person. It was kind of hard as soon as it went to Zoom, went like, and all that.
Also a great avenue for the board to hear from the public of what they may need to find more information or outreach on.
Yeah, we gotta get, we gotta get Kevin to loosen up and let people talk a little more.
There's a challenge for you.
I've tried, I've tried.
The, the, the listserv dampens discussion because it, the discussion takes place prior to any meeting. It used to be Little Town Meeting is where the discussion took place. Now it's already taken place by the time any of the meetings come along in which the select board and town officials are not privy to, are not, it's not official site for the, for the select boards.
And it's also difficult when the information gets put out that may not be quite correct.
We can't correct it.
And we can't respond to it. It just, it's very hard, very hard.
You could, you could post fact sheets to the website.
Can I respond to Ben? I really feel like I come to town meeting with an open mind.
I'm sure you do.
You know, I mean, I really, I read the listserv obviously and I have my own opinions, but I wanna hear what other people say. And I, so I'm not sure I agree with you that.
Well, I'm just reflecting back all the years there was no listserv, because the majority of my life.
Right, well.
And, and literally, it was the first chance of getting to all this was Little Town Meeting.
Yes.
And we'd show up and everybody would be there and have a discussion. And that would be the primary discussion before town.
Okay, point taken. Thank you.
And now the primary discussion is on listserv before any of that starts.
Last comment.
Well, I don't wanna, I've spoken more than I usually do already.
Well, that's good.
I, that's, I said that at Dartmouth all the time. The, I think there's a synergy between the listserv and the Little Town Meeting in that what is aired on the listserv, you may not be able to respond to officially, but it certainly creates a buzz, which I know informs a lot of your thinking from being in town hall. And if there can be a town-wide buzz about point X, Y, or Z, the Little Town Meeting, I think, might be more substantive and pointed than it would be absent the listserv. So I look, I look at those as synergistic. Would definitely be more pointed.
Well, all I can say, we don't have any choice anymore. The cows left the barn.
I thank you all very much. What I think we're gonna do, because we do have three non-publics coming up, we're gonna close down the public session. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. And we really, I am sincere, I thank you all. And this has been very helpful and.
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
Nice to have a conversation again.
It was good.